Oh yes, so Mr. Tom County of the City of Memphis, you should I call forth from the Treasury Division to put in a journal? All right.
Thank you very kindly. Colleagues, recently, three Memphis police officers tragically lost their lives. These brave men and women really were the best in blue, and we thank them for their service to us all. We send our deepest condolences to their family, friend, and fellow officers. I will read their names aloud, and then please join me in honoring these officers with a moment of silence. Officer Coriol C.J. Jones, Sergeant Namika Johnson, Colonel Mary Jackson. Let's please bow our heads for a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you very kindly. I would like to recognize our Chaplain of the Day, Dr. Kia Moore of the Church at the Well, invited by Councilman Smiley. The prayer will be immediately followed by our pledge of allegiance. Dr. Moore, would you please join us at the podium?
Say it again.
You can pledge allegiance together. I pledge allegiance.
No, this is prayer.
Oh, I thought you said immediately following. Sorry. Dear God, we thank you. We give you glory and honor for this day. We thank you for your power, for your grace, and for your mercy. We thank you for our government officials who are gathered here today and concern citizens. We ask that you continue to keep your hands around Memphis and Shelby County, God, that you allow your power to flow through the hearts of your people, that we might think positively about this spot of ground. We ask that you allow us to have our hearts and minds on one accord today, that this meeting might be productive, that it might keep the citizens of Memphis and Shelby County at the focus, God, and that we might strategize something today to do something powerful for this city. Bless the work of the hands of all of the City Council. God bless the work of the hands of everyone in the audience behind me. And God, we just ask you continue, God, to allow our city to prosper. We speak now against crime, God. We speak now against sickness. We even ask you help us to curb this COVID rise and the spikes that are happening in the hospitals. We give you glory and honor today, God, for what you are about to do through this city, for every proposal, every policy, every bill, every resolution, that it might be for your glory, God, so that your name might be made great through our works. It's in the name of Jesus Christ's name that we pray, amen, and thank God.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very kindly, Dr. Kia Moore, for that beautiful prayer. Councilman Smiley, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We hereby know that Dr. Kia Moore, in recognition of a life of exemplary qualities, outstanding service to the city, mayor Torres' involvement in humanitarian affairs, demonstrated concern for governmental process, has been appointed Chaplain of the Day by the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all the honors, rights, and privileges and prerogatives attaining to the office and to the sway of this certificate. Given under the seal, this first day of February 2022, Councilwoman, Chairwoman Jamita Swerengen, presented by your truly Councilman J.B. Smiley Jr. And to this council's forum, we do not come in behind it. Here is also another gift of our appreciation.
Thank you very kindly, Councilman Smiley, and thank you so much for warming our hearts, Dr. Moore. For every meeting, we must have an element of surprise. For the first time, and we thought we would introduce this, bringing in Black History Month, we have a special performance today that's being brought among the Memphis City Council. We have a group of youth from the high school, Central High School. Those of you in the audience and on the dais who graduated from Memphis Central High School, would you please stand? And we would recognize our Councilman, Martavious Jones, being an alumnus of Central High School in his absence as well. The high school, ladies and gentlemen, let's give them another round of applause as they come before us. And their wonderful director. As you all are preparing, before the central choir performs, Madam Comptroller, could you please call the roll? Okay, okay. Okay, we'll do it thereafter. She has excused herself for a moment. Back in the hands of the, do you have it? Okay. We're going to call roll. One moment, please. Performers.
Councilmember Canali, Carlisle, Colvette, Easter Thomas, Ford, Johnson, Jones, Logan,
Present.
Morgan, Robinson, Smiley, Warren,
Present.
Chairwoman Swerengen?
Present.
Chairwoman Swerengen, you have the call.
Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller. We're now in the hands of Memphis Central High School.
Can't you feel it? Can't you feel it?
Shout, oh my Jesus, 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 till he comes. Shout, oh my Jesus, 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 till he comes. I'm gonna sing till my Jesus.
Thank you very kindly. Let's give Central High School a round of applause. Brittany, do you have their certificates for the director as well as the students? We want you to know that we certainly appreciate you sharing your talents with us. We, the Memphis City Council members, we are extraordinarily grateful for you coming, and we expect you to please come again. Thank you for touring the Memphis City Council office as well as going up to tour with the mayor's office. Please return to Memphis City Council and safe travels back to your school. Thank you very kindly. Councilman Carlisle, I believe you have read the January 18th minute meetings, the meetings, minutes. Could you please share?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've read the meeting minutes and would like to make a motion to pull items 13 and 14 off of the meeting minutes.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, if Attorney Wade could address item 14, and then City Councilwoman Easter Thomas would like to address item 13.
Okay, you have moved it and it's been properly seconded by Councilman Colvette. Could you please do it electronically? Okay, electronically, it's been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilman Ford. Attorney Wade, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, 14 is item 59, ordinance 5769. It is codification ordinance to recodify a number of ordinances of the city of Memphis. It was inadvertently approved last meeting in my absence. We've held it for a number of months because of the labor-intensive work that it requires to recodify ordinances. And just to give you some background, the last code adopted by this council was in 1985. In 2007, the council attempted to codify, well, we didn't attempt. The administration attempted to codify our ordinances with Munich Code and in effect redid the entire code of ordinances. The only problem is, is until this body adopts that by ordinance, it is not the official code of the city. So as a result, we have for over, from 85 till now, been adopting ordinances, and Munich Code through their editorial process has been putting them where they thought they should go. But that job is our job, and that's what I've been working on. And it's a very, very long and tedious process. So what I would ask the body to do is pull this from the minutes tonight. I have a substitute ordinance that I would like for you to adopt. And then what I would like for you to do is just hold that substitute item until the next meeting, until I can have an opportunity to brief you more thoroughly. I would probably recommend to the body that we amend the the audit committee's responsibilities to also be city code, to review the city code, because essentially, there are a lot of errors that we make in terms of drafting ordinances, and it's this body's responsibility to clean that up at some point in time. And I think to have a dedicated committee that periodically reviews these things and codifies them officially is something that we need to do, and the public needs for us to do it as well. So I do have copies of the proposed substitute ordinance, and I'd like for somebody just to move, since it's been taken off the agenda, to move that be amended and substituted, and then ask that it be held for two weeks.
So Attorney Wade, do we need to ratify the minutes with this pulled off? And then after we've ratified the minutes, move the substitute ordinance?
Yes, because those things are back on the table as though nothing ever happened.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, for number 13 on our meeting minutes, ordinance renaming Fourth Street between Union Avenue and E.H. Crump Boulevard as Ida B. Wells Barnett Street. I would like to update the wording of this street so that we can ensure that Division of Engineering has the correct wording for it, and that needs to be updated to Ida B. Wells Street.
Second.
So we're striking the hyphen Barnett. Right, and we're, and keep it in the minutes as amended. But I just want to amend that before we get it into the minutes, so Division of Engineering can go forth, so we can have that done this month.
Thank you very kindly. Attorney Wade?
Without objection.
If you could come back to the podium, please. So is it proper to approve the amended minutes and then come back and vote on your substitute ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you very kindly. All right, without objection, item number 14 has been removed on the January 18th minutes. We're going to vote on the approval of the amended minutes of the January 18th, 2022 meeting. Anybody in the queue? Councilwoman Robinson, you're to be recognized.
The one that we're taking out, number 14.
Duly noted. Madam Comptroller, could you please call the roll for the two force to approve the amended minutes of the January 18th, 2022 meeting? The screens are up. Colleagues, please cast your votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. May we have a motion to place the substitute ordinance, number 5769, on the table?
So moved.
Could you please do it digitally? This item has been moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Colvette. Councilwoman Robinson, you're in the queue. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Alan Wade, for making sure that this information is correct and you should have in your hand the substitute ordinance, number 5769. And we will discuss this moving forward. Thank you. I'd like to move it back to committee, please.
Before we move this to committee, Attorney Wade, do you mind reading this or giving a briefing us? And give us a brief synopsis of this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. The, under section 361 of the Charter, the council, as the legislative body, has the full power and authority to revise, collect, and form a code of a general nature, and you may amend, alter, repeal, or modify any ordinance before you codify it. I can give you one example. We had an inadvertent omission of allowing liquor stores near schools and churches. That was not intended, but that's the type of, an example of the type of thing that happens when you make sausage. And in this, and in this case, this gives you the authority to correct those errors when we determine them. The Charter also requires that we periodically codify these ordinances, meaning we review them and then codify them officially so that they can be read into evidence in any court. So that's what this document does. It basically provides for the codification of all the ordinances that we have adopted since 1985. And we will be doing this in a series of ordinances, taking one title at a time. If you look at the document I gave you, it has an example of the number of titles that are involved. The Matthew Bender Code of Ordnances contained 49 chapters. Munich Code condensed them into 15. And in doing so, rearranged, renumbered, and did a lot of things that makes it a lot difficult for us to use the code. We know how we use it, and I am trying to rearrange and republish this document so that it will be more useful to the public, to the council, and to the administration. Administration's on board with this, and so that's essentially what we're doing. Now, what I will show you that I have in front of me, we will keep this in a loose, in a loose form so that it can be amended from time to time. But I'm going to show you a set of documents. This is about 400 pages of our pension ordinance. This is one of the 15 titles. So what has to happen with this document, we have been using a different numbering system than Munich Code does. So Munich Code takes our ordinances and interprets what we do and puts them where they think it best should go. So who's making that decision? An editor at a publishing company rather than the legislative body of this council, this city. So essentially, what we're trying to do is restore everything back to the same numbering system, incorporate all of the amendments that have taken place. And this one was a lot easier to do, and it took almost a month. And the reason it was a lot easier to do is because we made a comprehensive amendment in 2020, and therefore, it was a lot easier to recodify this document. So this would be one of the first ones we'll do. The next ones we'll do will be City Council, Administration. And for example, when Munich Code combined the Administration, they had combined all of the divisions with all of the boards and commissions. Those things need to be separated and dealt with and amended separately. So these are the types of things that we're trying to clarify and bring our code up to the 2020 century of whatever we are. But that's essentially what it is. It's a very tedious, technical process. We budgeted enough money to do it, and I wanted to take some of the more complex chapters and do them myself so then I can work with Munich Code to give them direction on how to fix this going forward without us having a whole lot of labor-intensive work. So that's essentially what it is. I mean, I'm sorry to bore you with it. It is very boring to do this, but it has to be done. It's something that we need to do, and we are required to have been doing since 1985, but we just haven't done it. So that's kind of what the sum of this is.
Thank you very kindly, Attorney Wade. You have not bored us at all. Thank you for enlightening us regarding this matter. Madam Comptroller, could you please read the first paragraph of this substitute ordinance, just for the record?
Yes, that reads, "An ordinance adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances of the city of Memphis, Tennessee, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective."
Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller. Councilwoman Robinson, you're in the queue. You may be recognized.
Madam Chair, I've spoken. I'd like for this item to come to committee so that Alan Wade can start sharing that information with us.
Thank you very kindly. Councilwoman Logan, you may be recognized. You're in the queue.
Thank you, Chair.
Of four, needs to have District One represented.
Page one of four.
I'm looking at the bottom. It says page one of four, where you're listing all of the districts before the prefix.
And the preface, yes.
Yeah, preface, I'm sorry. Just want to make sure District One is represented or listed.
Okay, I'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Logan. That's been duly noted. Councilwoman Robinson has requested to hold this item and refer it back to committee. Can we do that without objection?
Yes.
This is done without objection. This item will go back to the committee. Madam Comptroller, could you please call item number one?
Before we go forward, do we have any appearance cards for today or any items that are held or dropped from this agenda?
Certainly, Madam Comptroller. We have two add-on items for this afternoon. Item 26 is a resolution to appropriate $5 million of tourism development zone fundings to Memphis River Parks Partnership for Tom Lee Park improvements, all council districts sponsored by the Division of Housing and Community Development, requesting same night minutes. Item 27 is a resolution to accept, allocate, and appropriate federal grant funds in the amount of $1,294,130 under construction of EN 01062 Mississippi Boulevard Pedestrian Crossing Project, and appropriate geo bonds in the amount of $264,000 under EN 01062, District 6, Super District 8, requesting also same night minutes by the administration. Our same night minute items are items 26 and 27. Thank you very kindly.
It's a resolution of the 2021 Memphis City Council Humanitarian Award.
Councilwoman Johnson, you are to be recognized. Those here, for the family of Barbara Swerengen Ware, please come forward.
Council lady, you're recognized.
Thank you. It is an honor for me to present this award on behalf of the Memphis City Council. Oftentimes, people do great things in their lifetime, and we have the opportunity to lift them up and tell them how great and how appreciative we are for their services. But there are those opportunities and those situations where time just does not permit it. And circumstances present themselves where they are lifted away from us, but they are not forgotten. So today, we want to recognize one of those great, outstanding individuals who has done so much for the city of Memphis. Therefore, I want to read the resolution acknowledging per Councilwoman Barbara Swerengen Ware for her services to the city of Memphis. Memphis City Council Resolution, whereas on occasion, the Memphis City Council sees it fit to name certain public roles to honor citizens. You got the wrong one. Okay, whereas, forgive me, Barbara, please. Whereas the Memphis City Council Humanitarian Award commemorates the legacy of Dr. Martin Leslie King Jr. by recognizing individuals dedicated to the betterment of others and the promotion of racial harmony among all, and whereas Councilwoman Barbara Swerengen Ware, life and legacy embodies the essentials of the humanitarian awards, and... Ware, life and legacy embodies the essentials of the humanitarian awards, and whereas the youngest of Reverend John H. Swerengen Sr. and Mrs. Willie Beatrice Swerengen, seven children, Councilwoman Swerengen Ware was born and raised in a home within the Douglas neighborhood of Memphis, an area she lovingly referred to as Douglas, Tennessee. And whereas Councilwoman Swerengen Ware, profound history of servant leadership began at an early age as she served her church, and whereas with a trailblazing spirit, Councilwoman Swerengen Ware excelled in all aspects of her life. Proven as a valuable employee with the United States Postal Service, she diligently worked for almost three decades and broke barriers by becoming the first African-American female customer service representative within the Memphis Post Office. And whereas, after retiring in 1992 from the United States Postal Service, Councilwoman Swerengen Ware desired to continue working for her community. In doing so, she was elected to the Memphis City Council in 1994 as the District Seven Representative. And whereas during her time on the Memphis City Council, Councilwoman Swerengen Ware was a devoted advocate for her community and served as chairperson in 2000, ushering the council into the 21st century. And whereas Councilwoman Swerengen Ware retired from the council in 2011 after representing District Seven for sixteen years. However, before she retired, she realized her biggest goal with the Douglas High School reopening and a new building in the fall of 2008 after being closed twenty-seven years prior. And whereas although she retired from the former service in 2011, Councilwoman Swerengen Ware remained a faithful and diligent servant for her community throughout the remainder of her life. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council remembers the life of Councilwoman Barbara Swerengen Ware and her extraordinary impact on the City of Memphis, and thanks her family for accepting and on her behalf, the 2021 Memphis City Council Humanitarian Award. Be it further resolved that the Memphis City Council extend their praises to Councilwoman Barbara Swerengen Ware for her notable leadership, vision, substantial community impact, and commitment to the City of Memphis, as these invaluable contributions have made us better in the present day. It was adopted on February 1st, but this is for the 2021 year by all the members of the City Council with the former Frank Covet chairperson. I thank you again for the services that your relatives and friends has done for this great city. I'd like to present the plaque.
It's been moved by Council Lady Johnson, seconded by Chair Swerengen by acclamation. Approved.
And then we also have a humanitarian award we would like to present to you. On behalf of the City Council, again, thank you. Okay. We also have been presented to us to present to you a proclamation from Ahmaud Agbeyere, Senator for the 29th District here of Tennessee, for the services which Councilwoman Barbara Swerengen Ware performed here in the City of Memphis.
On behalf of the Ware and Swerengen family, I would like to thank the City Council for nominating my wife, Barbara Swerengen Ware, for this award. I think that she deserved it, and I think she's one of the greatest women in the City of Memphis at the time that she served on the City Council. She's done everything she could to make this city what it is today, and I thank God for her, and you couldn't ask for another thing better than nominating her for this award. Thank you very much.
Members of the audience, as our chair is making it back here, just a reminder about comment cards. If you wish to speak on an item, please make sure that you pull a comment card from our sergeant arms, and please make sure that you note what item you wish to speak on, including your name and address. Incomplete cards will not be recognized. Speakers will not be recognized unless you fill out a card prior to that item being called. So please make sure you see our sergeant arms for cards if you wish to speak on a particular item. That being done, Madam Comptroller, call item two, please.
Item number two is a resolution naming February 4th, 2022, as Transit Equity Day. What do you say?
Item three.
That was enough, too.
Yeah, number two. You're calling. Item number three.
I'm honored to call you. Thank you. Item number two is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Neely Road between Raines Road and Shelby Drive for Reverend Dr. James O. Pope Sr., District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Johnson.
When the family members of Reverend Dr. James O. Pope Sr., please come forward.
I think he spelled the one today.
Okay, you may proceed, Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you. Once again, this is an opportunity where we can recognize a fallen servant, but not a forgotten one. And I want to take this time again to tell Reverend Ossman, who's representing the church that Reverend Pope last served in, for recommending him and giving, you know, so many various reasons why he's so deserving after being here in the city his lifetime, and it is an honor for me to do this. And the resolution reads, whereas on occasions, the Memphis City Council sees it fit to name certain public roads to honor citizens of this community. And whereas Reverend Dr. James O. Pope Sr., former pastor and founder of True Life Missionary Baptist Church, is one such individual worthy of recognition. And whereas Dr. Pope graduated from Hamilton High School in 1956 and majored at Lemoore Orange College in 1973 with a Bachelor of Arts in Social Sciences degree, and whereas valuing education and the study of the gospel, Dr. Pope received both a Master's of Religious Art and Theology in 2000 and a Doctor of Theology in 2001 from Jacksonville Theological Seminary. And whereas Dr. Pope pastored in the Whitehaven era for more than forty-five years before founding True Life Missionary Baptist Church, where he passed for thirty-two years. Dr. Pope served as a pastor of Mount Jordan Baptist Church, and whereas Dr. Pope actively educated others of the gospel. Dr. Pope taught with the National Baptist Congress of Christian Education for twenty years on the miracles of Jesus. And whereas a trailblazer, Dr. Pope was one of the first Black supervisors for the Memphis Area Transit Authority, and whereas a man of service and leadership. Dr. Pope served as the dean of the Memphis Baptist Military Association, chairman of transportation, co-chairman of the Memphis City Wide Revival, executive treasurer and moderator of the Whitehaven District Association, provided free after-school tutoring service for students requesting additional support, and worked within the juvenile justice system to provide children with a second chance. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Memphis City Council that neatly road between Raines Road and Shelby Drive in Memphis, Tennessee, be designated as Reverend Dr. James O. Pope Sr. Boulevard. Be it further resolved that the city engineer is requested to effect suitable signs so designating such a public road. This was adopted February 1st, 2022, Cheyenne Johnson Councilperson and Jimnita Swerengen Chairperson. Again, it's an honor that we're able to do this for Reverend Pope, but I'm sure your church will continue his legacy and make a difference in Whitehaven. Thank you again. Would you like to speak?
Thank you very kindly, Councilwoman Johnson. This item has been moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman Ford. Yes, ma'am. Congratulations.
Thank you so very kindly, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Johnson, and of course, this distinguished body. On behalf of the True Life Missionary Baptist Church and the Pope family, we want to say thank you. Thank you for honoring the legacy of one so deserving in our pastor, Reverend Dr. Joe Pope Sr. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Madam Comptroller, could you please call item number three?
Item number three is a resolution naming February 4th, 2022, as Transit Equity Day. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Canali and Councilwoman
Councilwoman Logan and Councilwoman Canali are to be recognized.
Thank you, Chair. As vice chair and chair of the Transportation Committee, we are honored to mark the beginning of Black History Month and appreciate the opportunity to present this resolution and dedicate February 4th for the great civil rights leader, Ms. Rosa Parks. Whereas Transit Equity Day is a national day of action to commemorate the February 4th birthday of Rosa Parks, an iconic figure in the movements of social justice and racial equality, who played a major role in the inception of the civil rights movement. And whereas Transit Equity Day highlights Rosa Parks' 1955 pivotal work and her brave and determined advocacy for safe and reliable public transportation for all and communities both then and today. And whereas Transit Equity Day is a day of action, recognized to collaborate and elevate the message that public transit is a strategy to combat climate change and that public transit promotes affordable, accessible, clean, and safe transportation alternatives for all. And whereas the City of Memphis, as part of its transit vision plan, values sustainability and equity and desires to provide safe, functional, and accessible infrastructure and services that are environmentally sensitive and sustainable.
And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council does hereby proclaim Friday, February 4th, 2022, as Transit Equity Day, and urges citizens of Memphis to remember and celebrate the invaluable work of Rosa Parks and continue to find the means to create conditions for all people to thrive and proactively address disparities in health, mobility, social, and economic prosperity. Be it further resolved that the Memphis City Council urges the citizens of Memphis to attend and support the Transit Equity Day Community Forum on February 4th, 2022, at 2:30 PM, organized by MICA and the Sierra Club Tennessee Chapter, and to support other transit advocacy activities organized by Build Memphis and Rhodes College, given by my hand under the great seal of the City of Memphis this first day of February 2022. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very kindly. Is there anyone who would like to say anything, council members?
Yes, I'm Dennis Lynch. I would like to thank the City Council, the Transportation Committee of the City Council, Councilwoman Logan, Councilwoman Ford Canali, and all the council members for recognizing Transit Equity Day, for recognizing Rosa Parks, and for recognizing the importance of transit to the city and the need for the city to move forward with increased funding for transit and increased improved service for the people of the City of Memphis, and we thank you very much.
Thank you very kindly. This item has been moved by Councilwoman Logan, seconded by Councilwoman Canali, accepted by acclamation. Madam Comptroller, please call item number four.
Item number four is a resolution honoring and celebrating St. Jude Research Hospital on sixty years of pioneering research and treatment. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by all council members.
Can we have a council members to... This has been moved by Councilwoman Warren, seconded by Councilwoman Ford. Councilwoman Easter Thomas, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children one to fourteen years of age across all ethnic groups, socioeconomic classes, and geographical regions, cancer is diagnosed each year in about four hundred thousand children and adolescents ages nineteen and under worldwide. St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, founded in 1962 by the late entertainer Danny Thomas in the heart of Memphis, Tennessee, is internationally recognized for its pioneering research and treatment of children with cancer and other catastrophic diseases. Treatments developed at St. Jude Children's Research Hospital have helped push the overall survival rate for childhood cancer from twenty percent when the hospital opened in 1962 to more than eighty percent today. St. Jude Children's Research Hospital is a leader in understanding the long-term effects of childhood cancer treatment and pursuing improved treatments that ensure the best possible quality of life for survivors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Councilwoman Michaelan Easter Thomas, on behalf of the citizens of the Seventh District and the entire Memphis City Council, recognize St. Jude Children's Research Hospital for its continued commitment in its fiftieth year to research and treatment of children with cancer and other catastrophic diseases. Thank you all for the work that you so desperately do, not only for my district, our city, but the entire world. So thank you all.
Is there anyone desiring to speak? This item has been moved by Councilwoman Michaelan Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilwoman Canali, has been accepted by acclamation. Madam Comptroller, please call item number five.
Item number five is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Highland Street between Central Avenue and Southern Avenue for Jimmy Jamerson, District Five, Super District Nine. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Morgan. It was held from January 4th.
Councilwoman Carl, you may be recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilwoman Morgan unfortunately cannot be here today, so I have the privilege and honor of presenting this resolution and street naming. Whereas from time to time, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to name certain public roads to honor individuals worthy of recognition, the legacy of Memphis musician Jimmy Jamerson, representing one of those worthy occasions. And whereas Jimmy Jamerson's story is special as he represents an invaluable piece of Memphis musical patchwork, using his voice to contribute to our city's unrivaled roster of creative citizens. And whereas having attended Sherwood Middle School and being a proud graduate of Messick High School, Jimmy Jamerson collaborated with his bandmates from a young age, and he realized his potential for artistic success almost immediately. At age 17, his teenage band released a hit single that attracted national renown. The song, "If I Cry," led the group to be signed by Atlantic Records. And whereas although the initial good fortune was short-lived, Jimmy Jamerson was subsequently matriculated subsequently matriculated to the University of Memphis to study radio, TV, and journalism. While committed to his studies, he never lost sight of his goal to be a professional singer. And whereas evoking the tenacious spirit central to the hearts and minds of Memphians of every single stripe, Jimmy Jamerson never gave up on his dream. Ultimately, his natural talent, willingness to hone his craft, and relentless drive paid off as he soon sang with the band Target and found himself signed to A&M Records. During this time, he stood out for his ability to carry melodies with a unique passion. And whereas the added dream's true, the cream always rises to the top, so did Jimmy Jamerson. And he was subsequently recruited to be the lead singer of the band Survivor. With his ascension into the realm of rock stardom, he now had the band, he had the moves, he had the look, and most importantly, he had the voice. As a result, his career was cemented in the pantheon of American music. And whereas upon review, Jimmy Jamerson's addition to the band Survivor represented a period of resurgence for the musical group that experienced chart-topping singles and platinum-selling albums. And whereas ever creative and independent, after five years with Survivor, Jimmy Jamerson ventured out on his own as a solo artist and sought after session musician, collaborating with the likes of the fabulous Thunderbirds, John Healy, and ZZ Top, just to name a few. And whereas known to his fans as "The Voice" for his one-of-a-kind vocals, Jimmy Jamerson was a singer was a singer whose reputation was well-documented, appreciated, and international in its reach. As such, the Memphis City Council now wishes to postulately honor Jimmy Jamerson for his contributions to our community and culture. Now for now therefore be it resolved by the Memphis City Council that appreciation be expressed for the life and legacy of Jimmy Jamerson, whose outstanding musical talent was shared with audiences for nearly 50 years, thereby adding to Memphis's prominence as a musical city above all others. Be it further resolved that Highland Street between Central Avenue and Southern Avenue be declared Jimmy Jamerson Street in honor of the immensely talented Jimmy Jamerson. Be it further resolved that the city engineer is requested to affix suitable signs designated at this public road, given by the hand of Councilwoman Worth Morgan and Chairwoman Jameeta Swerengen.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Memphis City Council. I know my father loved this city with all his heart. The very last video he did, it showed Memphis, Bill Street, in the heart of our community. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. He loved the city, and so do I. Thank you so much.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Carl, seconded by Councilman Warren. This is approved by acclamation. Madam Comptroller, call item six, please.
Item number six is a resolution for Dr. Frankie Ray to honor his pastoral anniversary and jubilee celebration from February 1st through February 6th at New Salem Missionary Baptist Church. This resolution is sponsored by Chairwoman Swerengen.
Thank you very much. And Madam Comptroller, would you make our screens item six, please? There's still five.
Absolutely.
There we go. And please show that Chair Lady Swerengen moved it, seconded by Councilman Warren. Chair Lady Swerengen, you're recognized.
Thank you very kindly. Is there anyone present from New Salem Baptist Church today? Okay, Councilwoman Smiley, could you please come and accept this on behalf of Reverend Ray, Frank Ray? And I'll just read a paragraph to make it brief. Whereas in recognizing Dr. Ray's pastoral anniversary and jubilee celebration, which begins Thursday, January 27, 2022, and ends Sunday, February 6, 2022, at New Salem Missionary Baptist Church, we thank him in his guest speakers, comedian Chris Tucker, Dr. Jama Bryant, Coach Todd Day, Bishop Edgar Van, Pastor Donald Johnson, and Dr. Terry Anson for a jubilee celebration entitled, "You're Doing a Great Work. Don't Come Down," and shining influential spirit upon this community, this city, and the world. And to all they encounter have come to understand that to God be the glory, and such we have each made it better. Signed by Councilwoman Jameeta Swerengen, District 4. Thank you very kindly, Councilman Covet, and thank you so much for accepting this on behalf of Dr. Ray and taking it to him on this evening. Thank you, Councilman Smiley.
Very good. Moved by Chair Lady Swerengen, seconded by Councilman Warren. Go ahead and accept by acclamation. All right, Madam Comptroller, call item seven, please.
Item number seven is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Westmont Road between Castlewood Avenue and Western Park Drive for Coach Shirley McCray, District 6, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Chairwoman Swerengen. It was held from January 4.
Thank you very much, Chair Lady Swerengen. You're recognized.
Will Coach McCray and all of her guests please come forward? I see a lot of members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated.
Great, everybody come on down.
And her students that she coached for many years. I see her former players in the house.
Everybody come on down, please.
Whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to name certain public roads to honor citizens who have served this community. The life, legacy, and contributions of Coach Shirley Yvonne McCray, representing one of these worthy occasions. And whereas a native Memphian of widespread acclaim, Coach McCray was raised locally, graduated from Hamilton High School in 1959, received an Associate of Arts degree from Wilson Junior College in Chicago, Illinois, received a bachelor's degree in Health and Physical Education from Memphis State University in 1964, and earned a master's degree in Supervision and Administration from Trebekka Nazarene College in 1992. And whereas a trailblazer who shouldered the weight of societal change for the benefit of others, Coach McCray routinely broke barriers throughout her life. Specifically, she was the first African-American man or woman to enroll in and graduate from Memphis State University Health and Physical Education Department. She was the first African-American woman to play basketball, volleyball, and run track for Memphis State University. And she was the nation's first woman to coach an all-male football team. And whereas immensely talented with a relentless desire to share her God-given abilities with the world, Coach McCray has proven herself to be a gifted teacher and natural coach with a disdromal record of excellence in all that she does. And whereas despite having excelled in every endeavor, football became one of her true loves. As such, it is no surprise that she used athletics as a vessel to change the world and our community for the better. Notably, from 1973 to 1997, Coach McCray made history as a woman coaching male football, leading junior high and high school teams across the legacy Memphis city schools and district. And whereas although her teams did not always win every game, Coach McCray's primary focus was always to ensure that each young man was equipped with the confidence, understanding, and lessons needed to succeed in life. And whereas in doing so, she was tough, she was firm, but most importantly, she was impactful. To date, countless doctors, professors, policemen, firemen, and veterans trace their present success to their playing days under the tutelage of Coach McCray. And like a guardian maintained with skill and attention, the fruits of Coach McCray's careful labor are now full display. And whereas after a storied career as an athlete, educator, and coach, the Memphis City Council now wishes to honor Coach McCray for her work to improve both our city and nation to this day. All she encounters have come to understand that through hard work, faith, and perseverance, one can succeed. Now therefore be it resolved that Westmont Road between Castlewood Avenue and Western Park Drive be declared Coach Shirley Yvonne McCray Way. In honor of her exemplary contributions to the city of Memphis, be it further resolved that the city engineer is requested to affix suitable signs designating this public road. Adopted February 1st, 2022, sponsored by Jameeta Swerengen, Chairwoman of the Memphis City Council, District 4. Congratulations, Coach McCray! Also, I have a token the council would like for me to have and salute you with, and this is your day. Coach Shirley McCray. Would you like to say a couple of kind words?
I can say something. Can I say something?
She has a student that would like to speak.
I'm going to say this. It has been an honor to have served and played football for Coach McCray. She was she was very tough. She was motherly, but she was very, very tough. And I remember one time she made me sit down on the sideline because I was playing too much. And I was really, I was really hurt because I thought I was one of the great players. And it has been an honor to to be here today, and thank you to the city of Memphis for allowing and doing this for her and the wonderful ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha. Thank you so much for the Ksat, yo.
Just quickly, thanks to this council for doing this. I'll be quick. You can hear about Coach McCray's exploits on the field. We won most of those games. And you will see me and I wanting to shake her hand after games because we were being led by a female football coach. But what I just rose to say real quickly is the impact that she had off the field. Because of Coach Shirley McCray, I represent probably hundreds of first-generation college students. Because of Coach Shirley McCray, I graduated from Rose College with honors and followed the footsteps of Ralph McIntyre and Herman Morris, who's one of the great running backs at Rose College. That was because of Coach Shirley McCray. I am Dr. Steve Beckton today because she insisted that I stay in school and reach my potential. So these are the things she did, and we can feel this where the FedEx Forum with young men like me, and we still, we're middle-aged men now, we still call ourselves her boys because when she says come, we come. So we love you, Coach McCray, and I'm so glad that you're here to be honored today. Thank you so much.
I know the council have already read my book. Every one of you have one. So when the people from the places called call you and want to ask you questions about this honor today, you ought to be able to tell them that you read my book already. You already know about me. I want to just say something briefly. I know the gentleman back there is timing me a fair five minutes, and I'm not used to doing nothing in five minutes. Let me tell you why I'm grateful today. For the honor of coming before you, I'm honored because of some of my students here, my first students that I taught in 1967, they're here. Now you can add that up so you can see how old we are, especially my boys, too, my friends, my sorority sisters who never let me down, my family, my family, my pastor is here somewhere, okay? My pastor is here somewhere. But I want you to know I'm very thankful. And I'm thankful on November the 17th, I woke up, the Lord said, "Get up because you 80 years old today." Now you know I was thankful. I'm very, and I'm second, secondly, I'm glad the Lord let me live this my motto. If I can help somebody, my living shall not be available. When I see these boys and some of these sorority sisters that started with me and with me now, my pastor, you know, I've been in St. Jude 78 years. You understand what I'm saying? That's why I'm so happy today. I thought about, the Lord woke me up this morning and said, "Tell them a story. Were you here in 1941?" I started looking around when I came in, I said, "Hmm, they look like they were here." I graduated in 1959. It was segregation, people. There wasn't no black and white in, in a place like this. We didn't have no black and white. You understand? I've lived through segregation, you know? And now, and now I'm living in what? Integration, right? So I've come through three generations. And I'm telling you, that's why I'm so grateful and happy to still be here to tell the story. I remember, can I give just one little thing? Look at here. I remember when I was a kid, Parkway was a dividing line between blacks and whites. You hear me? We went to church, we walked, we went, what's cheering goes to? Do they walk? No. That's why we having all these problems, you know? Because the community worked together to build the things that they needed to know to make them a most effective person. Let me say something else quickly. Most of the blacks went to Bill Street. We didn't have but one street in Memphis blacks went to. Did you know all that? That's where we went to the doctor. We went to bought our clothes. I can't think of the name of that place on Bill Street that we had to go buy our clothes. What is it? There you go. I want you to hear this history that I've been through. That's why I thank God that I'm still here. Some people can't tell the story, they gone off. But I can tell the story. But I can tell the story. Let me see, something else. I've been writing all night. And she's checking my five minutes up. We, let me see, there's something I was going to tell you that you don't know anything about, but hey, read my book. Read my book. And people have been calling me for, they wanted to talk to you, so don't shy away. Tri-State, not Tri-State, they've already done a thing on me. I can't think of, what's the magazine that did something on me first? Ebony. They're coming back. They are going to do a series of movies. Now you all be, don't be running from the people. I'm gonna be the executive producer. I'm gonna get paid.
Get that ass to the back.
Okay, I'm out of time now. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Love you.
Thanks, Coach, and I did start reading the book, actually. Moved by Chairlady Swerigen, seconded by Councilman Warren. Let's go ahead and accept this by acclamation. We'll let everybody, I tell you what, Madam Comptroller, go ahead and call item eight as everyone is leaving. And then I'll slow it down after you read it.
Item number eight is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Ayers Street between North Parkway and Poplar Avenue for Bishop Henry M. Williamson, Sr., District 7, Super District 8. This resolution is sponsored by Chairwoman Swerigen. It was held from January 18th.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Why don't we just wait just a brief moment?
Moved by Swerigen, seconded by Warren.
M. Williamson, Sr. Come forward.
Is the family of Bishop here? Let's go ahead and come on up front. Madam Chairman, you're recognized.
Whereas when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to name certain public roads to honor citizens who have served this community. And whereas Bishop Henry M. Williamson, Sr., and his legacy of achievement represent one of these worthy circumstances. And whereas Bishop Williamson was born in Arkansas and reared in Tennessee and Gary, Indiana, he graduated from historic Roosevelt High School. He is a graduate of Purdue University with a BA in Sociology and Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary with a Master's of Divinity from Northwestern University in Evanston, Illinois, and awarded a Doctor of Divinity degree from United Theological Seminary and Bible College for his leadership and contributions in the area of civil and human rights. And whereas Bishop Williamson is married to Dr. Doris Yvonne Williamson, who has been an essential part of his success in the ministry, the church, and community, as proud parents of two adult children, Keely D. Williamson Key, husband Raymond, and Henry Jr., wife Dana. The proud grandparents of three grandsons, Jonathan, Henry III, and Derek. And especially grateful to his mother and late Mrs. Alma J. Williamson Carvin for her love, influence, and sacrifice in making him a Christian leader as he is today. And whereas Bishop Williamson firmly believes in a threefold ministry of salvation, education, and liberation through Jesus Christ with the favorite scripture, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me," Philippians 4:13 and Hymn Number 52, "Jesus is mine." And whereas Bishop Williamson holds the distinction of being the first CME church to lead a major civil rights organization as National President of Operation Push, now Rainbow Push, America's third-largest civil rights organization started by Reverend Jesse L. Jackson, Sr., to carry on the work of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for social and economic justice. And whereas Bishop Henry M. Williamson was elected the 52nd Bishop of the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church, July 3rd, 2002, at the General Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, and assigned to the 9th Episcopal District through 2020, 2002 through 2010. He served as the Presiding Prelate of the 8th Episcopal District, which compromises five regions throughout the state of Texas until 2014. He now serves as the Presiding Prelate of the 1st Episcopal District, which includes Arkansas and Tennessee regions. And whereas it is truly the sum of all of these attributes and qualities that make Bishop Henry M. Williamson, Sr., an invaluable member of the Memphis community. Now therefore it resolved that Ayers Street between North Parkway and Poplar Avenue be declared Bishop Henry M. Williamson, Sr. Avenue. In honor of his exemplary contributions to the city of Memphis, be it therefore resolved that the city engineer is requested to affix suitable signs designating this public road. Adopted February 1st, 2002, 2022, sponsored by Chairwoman Jameeta Swerigen, Memphis City Council, District 4. Let's give it up to Ayers Avenue between North Parkway and Poplar Avenue, be declared Bishop Henry M. Williamson, Sr. Avenue. Congratulations, Bishop. And here's a token of appreciation from the Memphis City Council. Please say a few words, Ford.
Congratulations.
To God be the glory of the great things he has done to Chairwoman Jameeta Swerigen and this august body, city council members. Thank you for the honor that comes to the Christian Methodist Episcopal Church. It was in 1910 that we started with the College Chapel Connection Hospital. But in 1954, the bishops of our church, when we could not go to white hospitals or white doctors, built from the ground up in 1954, the College Chapel Connection Hospital at 405-409 Ayers. And built so strongly with your support, Councilwoman Jameeta Swerigen, Cheyenne Johnson, Councilwoman Robertson, all of you, Councilwoman, Councilman Ford, we were helped in reconditioning and renovating that building into a multimillion-dollar facility to serve the homeless men and women. With our partnership with Room in the End, we now, at that historic hospital at 405-409 Ayers, have more than 100 homeless men and women, more than 40 children now have 24-hour care because of your support. Your support. Did not Jesus say in Matthew 25 and 35 through 40, "I was hungry and you fed me, naked and you clothed me. I was thirsty and you gave me to drink." Standing with me today, on behalf of the 30 churches of the Northwest District, is Presiding Elder and Pastor of the College Chapel, the oldest black church in Memphis, Presiding Elder Reverend Bethel Harris, Jr., and the pastor of the College Chapel Church. Standing with me today is Presiding Elder Reverend Paris James Lester, the pastor of the Mount Olive CME Church, where the NAACP was founded, and the Presiding Elder of over 30 churches on the Northeast District of the West Tennessee Region, the great pastors of the Mount Pisgus CME Church in Orange Mound, Reverend Willie Ward and his wife, on behalf of the more than 200 churches in Tennessee and Arkansas that I preside over, on behalf of the more than 1,000 students at Layton College in Jackson, Tennessee, that we founded in 1882. We are grateful to receive this honor. We are thankful to you. And I say to all of you, what a great day to begin Black history honoring College Chapel Connection Hospital and our partnership with Room in the End. You are a great council. You're not just a bluff city. You are the dream city, and we thank God for you, making our world a better place. My beautiful wife of 48 years is here, and I want her to preach you from Psalms 118 and 24 and Mark 12, 30, and 31. Dr. Doris Yvonne Williamson, can we give God some praise?
Thank you so very much. From Psalm 118, 24, "This is the day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it." And from Mark 12, verses 30 and 31, "And thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, with all thy soul, with all thy mind, and with all thy strength." This is the first commandment. And the second is namely this, "Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." There is none other commandment greater than these. Again, I would like to thank Councilwoman Jameeta Swerigen and Cheyenne Johnson and the Memphis City Council. Thank you for your help for bestowing this changing of the name from Ayers to Bishop Henry M. Williamson, Sr. We thank God for all of you and for all others who have been awarded this day. God bless all of you.
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you all again, and may God bless you.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Chairlady Swerigen, seconded by Councilman Warren. Let's accept by acclamation. Madam Comptroller, call item eight, please. Uh, nine. Sorry, I was, I was... Nine, please.
Item number nine is a resolution approving a special use permit at the subject property located at 1609 Corning Avenue. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Plant and Development. The case number is SUP 21-36.
Thank you very much. Councillady Johnson, you're recognized. Council, is our applicant present? So we are. Can I go ahead and get your name and address for the record, please?
Chairman Willie Slate, representing Tower Ventures, 495 Tennessee Street, Suite 152, Memphis, Tennessee.
Thank you very much. Sergeant Arms, do we have any cards on this case, item nine? We have no cards on this case, we have no opposition. As our chair is coming back here, colleagues, this case was heard in committee, I believe it did receive a favorable recommendation.
It did.
It has been moved. Give me a motion on that.
I move it.
It's been moved by Councillady Johnson, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Seeing no members in the queue, I assume you're ready to vote on item nine. Madam Comptroller, press the screen. And cast your votes. Go ahead and cast your vote. No, it's your screen, I can't touch it.
Councilmembers, cast your votes for item number nine.
Go ahead and present the votes, please.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
Thank you, that item passes. Please call item 10 as amended.
Just one minute to speak, please.
Okay, you're recognized.
What I wanted to do here today is, first of all, we were not aware that Ms. Barbara Swerigen Ware was going to be honored today. And those of y'all who know us know that for eight years she was part of the zoning team that we're on. This was, this is the first council meeting since Ms. Ware passed, and I felt like it was apropos and needed to say a few words about her, and I'll be brief, I promise. I was driving down Union the other day and saw the Last of L sign about how this particular person made Memphis a better place. Well, Ms. Ware made Memphis a better place. There's no question about that. She loved this city, she loved people, and she loved serving her constituents, and she loved serving on this council. Those of us that were lucky enough to have known her are better people because we did know her. She is irreplaceable, and it'll, sometimes people leave you, things are never the same, and this is exactly the situation here. It is sad that she's gone, and it will never be like it was. I will say this in conclusion, I'm really happy that there is a Swerigen still on this city council with her good name, bringing forth more good counsel to this city. I will thank you for allowing me to speak. Appreciate it.
Well done, Mr. Ketchman. Well done, well said. Thank you very much. Madam Comptroller, go ahead and call item 10. I'll relinquish the chair back.
Item number 10 is a resolution approving a special use permit at the subject property located at 1925 Union Avenue on the south side of Union Avenue east of Barksdale Street. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Plant and Development. The case number is SUP 21-39.
Thank you very kindly. This item was moved by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by, I'm not seeing it on the screen.
I don't, Smiley.
Councilwoman Smiley. Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Swerigen. Is the applicant here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you're here. May I have your name and address for the record?
Thank you. Bertha Salamito Vazir, Salamito Land Planning, 1779 Kirby Parkway, Memphis.
Okay. Is there any opposition in the audience? Madam Chairman, I think at this time, being that they're not in the opposition, there's no need for another presentation. We saw one earlier. Okay, I'll return it to you for a vote. Committee met and will recommend a favorable as amended.
Thank you very kindly. As amended.
Right.
I see no one in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes on item number 10. Let's cast your votes, please.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvette, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Chairwoman Swerigen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, could you take us to the consent agenda? Item number 11.
Thank you. Item number 11 is up for second reading. The ordinance number is 5818. This ordinance is sponsored by Councilman Jones and Councilman Smiley. Item number 12 is a resolution accepting public improvements for Morning Sun Road sewer extension and authorizing release of the bond. The contract number is 5361. Chairwoman Swerigen concludes our consent agenda items.
Thank you very kindly. I see this item has been moved by Councilman Colvette, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. I see this item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. I see no one in the queue. Please clear the screen so we may cast our vote on the consent agenda. Please cast your vote.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Easter... Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, please take us to item number thirteen, MLGW Fiscal Consent.
Item number thirteen is a resolution approving change number one to contract number one, two, three, five, five DocuSign with DocuSign Incorporated in the funded amount of thirty-four thousand and twenty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Item number fourteen is a resolution approving change number four to contract number one, one, nine, seven, four Cross Connection Control Survey Inspection with Mid-South Engineering Consultants LLC in the funded amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item number fifteen is a resolution approving change number one to contract number one, two, two, three, eight Electronic Substation Construction and Maintenance Services with RMS Energy Company LLC to decrease the contract award amount to reflect a decrease of one million five hundred six thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Item number sixteen is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Hitachi Energy USA Inc. for Tropes Mesh Routers Network Equipment in the amount of two million eight hundred sixteen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Item number seventeen is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Industrial Controls and Electrical LLC for Distributed Process Control Panels for Morton Pumping Station in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand and eight dollars. Item number eighteen is a resolution awarding a sixty-month purchase order to Cart International for Network Transformers in the amount of four million seven hundred sixty-one thousand forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Item number nineteen is a resolution awarding a twenty-four-month purchase order to Infinity Supply LLC for purchase of ductile iron pipe in the amount of seven hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. And item number twenty is a resolution awarding contract number one, two, two, eight, nine, Independent Claims Adjuster Services to Horton and Associates of Memphis in the funded amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Chairwoman Swerengen, that concludes our MLGW Fiscal Consent items.
Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller. I don't see anyone in the queue. Will you please, will you please clear the screen so we may cast our votes? This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilwoman Logan.
Thank you. Chairwoman Swerengen, would you like the record to reflect, please, for the MLGW?
There seems to be a correction. It was moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilwoman Smiley.
Thank you.
We stand corrected. Thank you very kindly.
Councilmembers, please cast your votes.
Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Chairwoman?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Smiley, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, let's please go to the add-ons, items number twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Thank you. Item number twenty-six is a resolution to appropriate five million of tourism development zone funding to Memphis River Parks Partnership for Tom Lee Park Improvements. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Division of Housing and Development, and there is a request for same night minutes.
This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Warren. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number twenty-six. You have a card?
Do you have a card?
Twenty-six.
Mr. Joe Kent, could you please state your name and address for the records?
Joe Kent, fifty-one eleven Flamingo. The public-private oversight process is non-existent today in committee. You force the taxpayers to uphold their ten million dollar commitment to TLP while not holding the elitist accountable, first for their donor commitment for the TLP project that they authored. TLP is an unneeded project that has been described by Carol Colletta herself as a glamour project. Glamour projects are not needed but nice to have. Had you conducted proper oversight, which in my view should have been modeled by Tasser appointee Chase Carlisle, MRPP's current audited financials would have shown on their cash flow statement four point nine million dollars in negative proceeds from donor proceeds. Proper oversight would have questioned this while also questioning unmet donor commitments and the expenditure of DMA parking funds for the Cut Bank bluff behind Puke's compound. You should also request current internal MRPP financials and total federal, state, and local expenditures with regard to the riverfront. And has anybody began to question what this lake will do to the maintenance budget? All that to say, I hope Speaker Saxon has not seen Councilman Carlisle's inaction on public-private oversight matters. Further, I believe why I prefer consolidation after the elitists get all their glamour projects funded, and as part of his Tasser charge, we will see Councilman Carlisle lecturing us on government efficiency. Like you should have rejected the left-wing elitist boondoggle, you should reject this undeserved MRPP request today. Now, they have negative four point nine million dollars from donor proceeds on their latest financials, and their donor proceeds aren't meeting their commitments. And y'all didn't ask any questions about that? None? Thank you.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. Kent. Any comment cards, Sergeant Arms? I don't see anyone in the queue. Madam Comptroller, could you please clear the screen so we may cast our votes for item number twenty-six?
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, item number twenty-seven, please.
Is a resolution to accept, allocate, and appropriate federal grant funds in the amount of one million two hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars under construction for EN zero one zero six two Mississippi Boulevard Pedestrian Crossings Project, and appropriate geo-bonds in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars under EN zero one zero six two District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Public Works, and there's a request for same-night minutes.
Thank you very kindly. Councilmembers, may we have someone to move and second this item? This item has been moved by Councilman Colvet, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. I don't see anyone in the queue. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Madam Comptroller, may we go to the regular agenda at this time?
Item number twenty-one, an ordinance to amend Chapter nine dash twelve Air Pollution Control of the City of Memphis Code of Ordinances to add the Shelby County Air Code. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number five eight one seven is sponsored by the Division of Public Works.
Councilman Colvet?
Thank you very...
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Smiley's not here, so I'll handle it. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Committee met, recommends approval, and Council Lady Robinson has moved.
Thank you very kindly. This item has been moved by Councilwoman Robinson, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. I see no one in the queue. Yes, ma'am. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Item number twenty-two?
Item number twenty-two is an ordinance for designation of qualified public use facility creation of the Peabody Hotel Tourism Development Zone Tourism Surcharge and otherwise providing with to the foregoing. Up for third and final reading, ordinance number five eight one five is sponsored by the Downtown Memphis Commission and Center City Revenue Finance Corporation. It was held from January fourth.
Councilman Ford?
Thank you. Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move it.
This item has been moved by Councilman Ford, seconded by Councilman Corvet. I see no one in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please clear the screen so we may cast our votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Item number twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three is... Item number twenty-three is a resolution to amend the council rules of procedure to rename the Division of Parks and Neighborhoods to Memphis Parks. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Logan.
Councilman Warren?
Yes, Madam Chair. The committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
Can you do it electronically, please? May we get someone to second? This item has been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilman Corvet. There's no one in the queue. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes.
Put a title to that?
I was Warren and Corvet. Could you do that? Thank you.
Uh, let's...
The councilmembers, please cast your votes.
Out of order.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes.
This item passed. Item number twenty-four?
Item number twenty-four is a resolution to transfer and appropriate construction funds in the amount of two million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair rehab existing damaged sanitary sewer pipes using CIPP process at various locations. The project's number is SW two two three zero one, install CIPP annual twenty-two. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Division of Public Works.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Chairwoman, the committee met and recommends approval, and I so move.
This item has been moved by Easter Thomas, seconded by Councilman Corvet. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Mr. Colvet would like to be... I called your name. Anybody else?
Disregard.
Swerengen, yes. I'll show Chairwoman Swerengen is voting yes on this item.
Thank you. This item passed. Item number twenty-five?
Twenty-five? Item number twenty-five is a resolution to transfer and appropriate construction funds in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to repair rehab existing storm drain pipes using CIPP process at various locations. Project number ST zero three two 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 Storm Water CIPP twenty-two. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Division of Public Works.
Councilwoman Easter Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, we recommend approval, and soon as this on the screen, I so move.
Thank you very kindly. This item has been moved by Robinson, seconded by Canali. Please clear the screen so we may cast our votes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Logan, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes.
This item passed. Thank... Councilman Corvet, have you read the same-night minutes?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've read them, colleagues. Items twenty-six and twenty-seven are in order, and I move their adoption, same-night minutes.
This item has been moved by Councilman Corvet, seconded by Councilwoman Carlisle. Please clear the screen so we may vote on the same-night minutes.
Canali, yes. Carlisle, yes. Colvet, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Johnson, yes. Robinson, yes. Warren, yes. Chairwoman Swerengen, yes. Councilmember Logan, also, yes.
This... This item passed. Thank you very kindly, Madam Comptroller. Colleagues, as you well know, Judy's last day was Friday, and I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our newest staff member, Nina Wilkins Hitchens, who will start in our office tomorrow as executive assistant. She joins us from the council records office, where she is a council operations analyst. Deputy Comptroller Snipes would like to... Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, on behalf of myself and Comptroller Morris, I'd like to congratulate Nina on a well-deserved promotion, barely making six months probation. She excelled, and I am so proud of her. She's a quick learner. She's modest. She's humble, and we all work as a team, so I don't feel like I'm losing her. I congratulate her on her promotion.
Thank you very kindly. Let's welcome Nina Wilkins Hitchens. We look forward to you coming on board tomorrow. We have some public... We have some public comments. Mr. Lis... Is he still here? Mr. Gray? Lisimba Gray? Joe Kent? Your name and address again, please.
Joe Kent, fifty-one eleven Flamingo. I would like to object, Madam Chair, to the chambers being closed to the public when all Health Department recommendations have ended today in the committee, during committee. Next, I'd like to voice my position of Emily Greer for the CRA Board. I believe Ms. Greer is part of the racially diverse public-private complex that has been running, Memphis Tomorrow Complex, that's been running and sitting in the ground for years. I believe her appointment strengthens the rubber stamping of public funds requests to the CRA Board coming from the MMDC Board on which Puke, Chad Yak, and Doug McGowan sit. Secondly, if you don't believe the former, you should consider breaking the pattern of appointing executive retirees from the same companies like St. Jude, FedEx, AutoZone, and others to public-private boards. Why? Because it has not worked. Third, the skill... And then Christine Richards is part... And Christine Richards is part of that, too. Third, the skill set needed for the CRA board is that of an accountant with real estate and infrastructure development experience. This is because the CRA doesn't keep their books. Don't believe me, read the CRA minutes. I'll send them on to you, just so you can see they don't keep their books. And this is Ms. Greer's background. And finally, after two months, the city cannot produce the amount of TIF distributions for the CRA Highland Road TIF that I made through public information request. The county satisfied that public information request in three days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Mayola Anderson Cox? And Darlene Pettis, you can come to the court sport. You will be after Mrs. Cox.
I appreciate the counsel for having me here.
Yes, ma'am, and I noted, I see you noted on your card that you're seventy years young. Seventy-eight years young.
I'm a former activist from the sixties.
Yes, ma'am.
I've come to introduce myself to Memphis, and I know I had to start here.
Could you give your name and address for the records, please, Ms. Cox?
My name is Mayola Anderson Cox, resident of Memphis for now for fifty-five years, from Greenwood, Mississippi, working with John Lewis, so I've been getting in good trouble at Magnolia Terrace.
Could you please share your address?
Six, sixty-nine North Third Street, apartment two, zero, six.
Thank you. You may proceed. You may proceed.
But, baby... So I gave you my address.
Yes, ma'am. You can address the council at this time.
Okay, there is some serious matters, and I feel that it need to be taken care of immediately. My health has been damaged since I've been at Magnolia Terrace under their management. My violated, my civil rights and my human rights has been violated. I didn't even feel like coming here, but I had to. God said, "Come. You can't stop fighting." So since I've been there, I've been threatened physically, and I've been trying to be a voice for the seniors. They're scared. They're gonna get proud if they say something. They don't stand with me, and they don't stand behind me. So I said, "Okay." I have written letters. I've gone down about twenty avenues. Remise Barry, I've sent a letter to her. Easter Thomas, Mayor Strickland, Field Office, Fair Housing. So now I'm concerned with who's covering up this stuff over here at Magnolia Terrace. They have converted into a nursing home and a halfway house, okay? So it need to be fixed. I want to move, and I guess maybe the city will help me move to a distant place because when I moved there in twenty sixteen, I think that's when Mayor Strickland came to my building for us to vote for him. My hug, I gave him a big hug. So now I'm concerned with when I vote for people, I'm a voters registration activist from the sixties while with Dr. King and John Lewis. And so with me not getting any response, I want the citizen council to please ask Ms. Thomas and Mayor Strickland to share this big package that I sent them of my life story at Magnolia Terrace. So the main office is out on Appleton Road. I have been told, I had five vacant unit. I said, "I need a real warrant with a real sheriff." That's why I'm still there, because they knew, they didn't have anything on me, except they don't like it because I'm vocal. I said, "I'm gonna use my First Amendment of the Constitution. I'm not violent. I worked in a nonviolent movie, student nonviolent coordinating committee in Mississippi. The only time I've been to jail was for civil rights." So if you all don't mind, I got this, but I hadn't had it edited. This was some additional information. We have smokers in the building. When I moved there, my application didn't say, "Ms. Cox, if you move here, you gotta be on the gag order." I was like, "Oh, my God." So since I've been there seven years, somebody need to check it out because it's been some mean stuff happening. The management helped.
Ms. Cox, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, I hope y'all look into this matter, Ms. Thomas.
Miss... One moment, please. Do you want to address Ms. Cox? Ms. Cox, if you could come back to the podium, Councilwoman Easter Thomas would like to share something with you.
Good evening, Ms. Cox. I'm on this side. Definitely, don't leave yet. We're almost done, so me and my analysts can get with you and see what the issues are so we can look into it for you. So I apologize not getting that mail beforehand, but since you had to come our way down here to make that statement as well, but we'll definitely get with... Don't leave. We'll get with you after these next few cards.
Appreciate it, Heather. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. This is Darlene Pettis. If you give your name and address for the records, please?
I'm Darlene Pettis, and I live at six, six, nine North Third Street. I'm new. I just moved there. Blessed. And it's Memphis. What else do I have to get?
You may address the council.
Okay. I'm there, I'm here mainly because I don't like rolling people across Third Avenue.
Could you speak into the mic so that we can hear you?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's very busy in that area. I have to roll. I don't have to, but I volunteer to roll the smokers across a busy street. We have a bench right on the side of us, and we've been there, and because they changed a manager, we no longer can go to the bench. Now, I can walk, but there are people with walkers. There are people with wheelchairs that smoke cigarettes, and it's far enough away from our main entrance. It was put there for them to smoke, and all of a sudden, management came in and changed, and now they want people to go across a busy street is very dangerous. And we have site assistants. That's my second. It's one site assistant with seventy-five. I believe there should be one site assistant per floor. It's only sixty-nine apartments, and one site assistant a floor is better. The site assistant, well, if I'm locked out, let me in. So why should a lady on the third floor do all three floors when each person from one floor? We need three site assistants. And the third one was the attitude of the new management. They treat the seniors, Latara treats the seniors so bad. She treats, she talks to them ridiculously. They earned the right to be here. They work, they live, and they earned the right to be here. So we don't need a management that does not know how to talk to seniors. So that was my three issue. I was falsely accused of stealing. The police came for a can of Ajax because our maintenance lady quit. Well, she didn't quit. She left, and she had a medical issue, and I took some cleaner and put them in my arm and was on my way to the third floor to help somebody clean, and a police was calling on me. So the lady that's a site assistant says she's gonna get me out of there because I'm doing too much. I play music in the community room. I'm sixty-three. I got there when I was sixty-two. I was blessed because nobody gets in Magnolia Terrace in a four-month period. Well, I did. I was just blessed.
Ms. Pettis, I'm sorry, but you're out of time. Councilwoman Easter Thomas will be happy to speak with you at the tail of this meeting if you would just remain present. This brings us to the end of the meeting agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Adjourn.
This item, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a safe travel home to your destination.
Hope you survive winter death twenty-twenty-two.